Good evening, everybody. I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for March 12th, 2024. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Absent.
Alesskowitz?
Here.
Excuse me. Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Okay, everybody, please, all right, eight present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silence. And the pledge.
Pledge and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the February 13, 2024, city council meeting minutes, please?
To accept.
Council Blackmer, Councilor Alesskowitz, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the council meeting minutes from February 27th, 2024. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Council Blackmer, Councilor Fitch, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, hearing visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. And I'm going to ask you that you remain within the two minutes, and I'm going to have a little signal about 10 seconds before your time is up, I'm going to raise the gavel at the two-minute mark, I'm just going to tap it very lightly because we have a lot of folks here tonight. So who would like to start out on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. Council Paper Number 11,00826. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams regarding various fees established in the city code, referred back to the Finance Committee with a return date of March 12th, 2024. Councilor Bona, do you have an update for us?
Yes. I'll be making a motion to postpone to the second meeting of April.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, let me continue. So, enclosed, you will see a report, the Finance Committee met, and we will be meeting again tomorrow night with the mayor and the solicitor. As this has multiple times, can of worms keeps opening and we find other things, but since the solicitor got back to us with some suggestions, we're finding things that we may be in conflict with the MGL, different laws that the state has. We actually may have some conflicts within our own ordinances of things that we missed that the solicitor has caught, which is great because that's why we did forward it to them. The report will explain most of that. I won't get into too much detail tonight, but if you read the report, you'll see that. But again, we will be meeting tomorrow at 5:30 to take these concerns from the solicitor, and we compiled some questions to ask tomorrow.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Vote on a motion, we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting in April. All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper Number 12,191. Communication from Councilor Shade requesting the local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage postponed from the meeting of February 27th, 2024, with a return date of March 12th, 2024. Councilor Blackmer, do you have an update?
So I was working on them, had some issues, and I want to be able to send it to the solicitor. Hopefully, they're going to be done with the finance stuff so they can do this. So if we could postpone this, I move to postpone this to the first meeting in April, so the meeting of April 9th.
Okay, motion to postpone to the first meeting in April.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, any motion to vote on to postpone this to the first meeting in April? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council Paper Number 12,331. A communication from Councilor Sapienza recommending that the Public Safety Committee review the rules ordinances and investigate the enforcement of the city's gun range on Patterson Road. Councilor Blackmer, do you have an update?
No. So what I was going to suggest that we move this to, we continue this till the second meeting in May?
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting in May.
Yeah, let me make sure I'm here. Masbo's the 14th. So the 28th I'll be here, so yeah.
Okay. All right. Again, we have a motion to postpone to the second of May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Alesskowitz. Any other discussion? Councilor Wilkinson?
Just curious why we're going to the second meeting in May? Is there some preliminary thing that needs to be done before we can?
Well, I'd have to set up a meeting with the public safety people to be here. I don't have a lot of information on this, and I've got a pretty tight schedule for the next few weeks.
Just asking.
That's why.
Councilor Alesskowitz.
I'd like to also make a motion to also refer this back to general government because it seems the common theme is shooting outside of hours, off days, unauthorized people, to see if there's a possibility to set up a fine structure to help deter one of the top leading calls to the range.
Okay, we also have a motion to...
Point of order?
Okay.
Can we do two at once or are we amending the first one?
Why don't we amend the...
As the person who made the motion, can I rescind my motion and make a motion to refer this back to the administration?
Yes, you may. Okay, motion be rescinded.
And have the, get some more information from the police department. I know we're talking fines, I know we're talking a lot of things, a lot of issues with this, general government, finance, but it seems like we need to have another conversation about what this is and what's going on with it. I know this has been on topic for these four years, and probably four years before that, it keeps coming back. So it might be better to refer back to the administration and maybe have the police chief or the lieutenant, Lieutenant Beverly, give us a report.
Okay, we, okay. Council Wilkinson?
Well, actually, he's done that a number of times, and the police at this point don't really have a problem what's going on up there. We can set up fines, we can do this. The gun range has been a point of contention for, as Councilor Blackmer said, for eight or 10 years.
Just, I don't think we got a second for discussion. No, we, let me get that, sorry.
Second.
All right, now we have a, now we have a motion. Okay, thank you.
In any event...
Yes.
We can have the police come in again, explain what they explained to us earlier with late last year or earlier this year. They feel they're doing an adequate job up there. I know the neighborhood probably doesn't think so because everybody has their individual problems with it, but it's been explained to us already.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Shade?
This is, as Council Wilkinson has had, this is something that's come up numerous times previously. I think if we're going to address this through ordinance and look deeper into this and even potentially look at changing ordinance, we're going to need some kind of written report showing violations. And I don't think we've ever seen a written report showing violations because my understanding is that the police found that there really aren't violations, it's just people not being happy with the noise or different aspects of the gun range. Also, that most of the problems had been on other private gun ranges, not the North Adams range, from my recollection. So I think to address this in ordinance, we would need to see exactly what the violations are before we could even address, like, why would we put in fines if we don't even know what the violations are? If it's just being too loud, we're working on noise ordinance language now, so that will help fix that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Wilkinson?
That's what I say, I agree 100%.
Council Blackmer?
We don't have the facts yet to make it...
Council Sapienza, when you, this came from the previous council and the previous Public Safety Committee, when you brought it in and referred it, I was, the reasoning behind it was a specific complaint, was it just general?
Specific complaints on the city's gun range by a nearby resident?
I'm not sure if that's in our purview. I mean, it really seems like it's something more that should be addressed by the administration and the police department.
Okay, but the original motion or the original...
Was to refer to...
Was to refer to us and to review the rules and just meet with the police department to see if everything that's being done is being done, that's all. Council Bona?
Through, well, through the chair. You said this is from a complaint. I guess the question is, so the council has, again, reviewed this in the past, and I would want to say, is there anything new that's coming forward that we haven't heard from individuals or complaints?
I had a complaint in November of this year.
But from something new? A new concern? A new person?
No. Same person.
So to me, we would just be rehashing exactly what we've done before.
Yeah.
You know, we can read the old articles and the old minutes, and we'll know exactly what we're going to hear. Not saying it's right or wrong, but at this point, we're going to be discussing something that we have already discussed on exactly the same complaints from the same person.
Anybody else?
My suggestion is, if that is the case, if we're talking about one person, one complaint, that we've talked it over before, is to file. That would be, I'm just saying, you know, we've done this, and these concerns need to go to the administration. I don't see what the council at this point would be doing that's any different than what we've done.
Council Wilkinson?
I agree with Council Bona. If it goes anywhere, it should go back to administration. I don't think we should get general government involved or other committees involved because of one person's complaint. We're all allowed to complain. The matter is, do we set the ball in motion? And how long would it take to go through all that? All the other things on the agenda tonight have been on the agenda for a year or more, and I can see this one, if it's thoroughly vetted, going even longer. But Council Bona is right, we've been there, done that.
Council Blackmer?
No, I was just going to say, the motion is to refer to the administration, so, but, Council Shade?
Council Shade?
Thank you. Through the chair to the mayor, would you be able to provide any additional insight to what's already been said?
Sure, happy to. So when I became mayor, I was presented with a letter from a resident that was sent to the city many years prior to me coming back to City Hall. It had some concerns about lead in the well, shell casings in the soil, and the vegetation issues through the DEP. At that time, it was found that the city never responded to that letter. So we've tested all the wells and the surrounding properties for those residents who wanted to participate. We've done a soil testing as well, and we are keeping up with the vegetation, and the DEP is satisfied with what we've done. We receive regularly, probably complaints from one person, sometimes two people, and the concern is that about after-hours shooting. So people who, you know, the range is supposed to close at 2:00, who are still there at 2:15, or who may go up on a holiday, or who may shoot on a day that the range is closed. When those calls come in, we send a cruiser. You know, we scoop people out and say, hey, we're closed, we need to work, put up a new sign, which we're planning on doing this spring. We've taken back all the keys and changed all the keys, and I've given a direct order from the police department to monitor the range during closing, to ensure that if somebody's still there, say at 2:00, that they're asked to, you know, discontinue for the day. So we've tried to be responsive, but the reality is, it's one or two individuals who are complaining, you know, and we are really trying to enforce, when the range is closed, the range is closed. We've also purchased a camera to put up there so we can monitor it from dispatch. Again, we've been waiting for good weather to put it up there. So we are trying to address the needs of two people, but it is a concern. When the range is closed, the range is closed. But I also think it provides a safe place for people to shoot in the community, which is important to us because we are having an uptick of private ranges popping up within the city. So as far as this, I don't know what else is to be done other than really staying on top of the police department about making sure when the range is closed, no one is shooting, and that's what we're doing. If you'd like to tie up Chief Bailey's time and have him come in and talk to, whether it be public safety or general government, I just feel like this is something that you've all discussed, I've been discussing for the last two and a half years, and we're never going to please some people, but we really are taking steps to address the after-hours shooting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could continue?
Yes, go ahead, Council Shade.
With that said, and with everything else that's been said, I do agree that we shouldn't be sending this to committee. I don't even know that we need to send it back to the administration since we've gotten an update. I think the key here is enforcement of the hours, and I think that's being worked on, and so long as that's being worked on, I'm satisfied that the issue for now is as resolved as it can be, at least through the city council, and the administration can keep up with the enforcement. Thank you.
Council Blackmer?
I rescind my second motion and make a motion to file.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to file and a second. Any further discussion?
I still have a motion on the floor.
You have a motion to amend.
I have a motion to send to general government to seek opinion from the city's...
Yes, but it's an amendment.
...about a fine, a structure.
Point of order.
Which I still think is...
Point of order, yeah, the motion that you were proposing never got a second, and then she rescinded the original, so your motion is not on the table, but you could propose that now if you really wanted to.
Well, we haven't voted on that.
But we have a motion, we have a motion and a second, you could propose to amend.
We're still in discussion right now.
Right.
We are in discussion, but you could propose to amend and ask it to be sent instead of filed.
I'll rescind with hoping, hoping the future that something does change, and I will bring, I'll bring it back, we'll leave it in the police department and administration's hands for enforcement to see what does happen if they do go up there and it will deter people shooting after hours, because I do receive several phone calls from people up there and emails and text messages that people are up there on a Saturday at 7:00 at night or Sunday when they're closed, Monday when they're closed, Tuesday when they're closed. So my concern is, not the original callers with the premise of what their calls were, is the after-hours shooting and finding ways to deter it to satisfy the neighbors.
Okay. All right, so right now, we have a motion to file. Would you, do we want to amend that at all? To send that to general government?
I'll just rescind, but it never went anywhere.
Council Blackmer, had we sent it her original motion? Okay, so we have a motion to file.
Second.
We had a second, Council Shade did.
Second, yeah, there's already a second. Councilor Fitch?
One more question, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Through the chair to the mayor, if I may as well. Can you let us know, how long has this been in operation?
Oh, 50, yeah.
60 years.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. And what are the hours? I heard that...
I am prepared for you, Council Fitch. Hours of operation are Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from 10:00 to 7:00 p.m. or sunset, Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00, except for when the police are recertifying. And then at that point, we notify the neighbors that we're there on an odd time. Range is always closed on Sunday and holidays, Sundays and holidays.
Council Breen?
Through the chair to the mayor, is it possible to put a sign up there that says, these are the hours, and when you're not within the hours, you're trespassing?
Yeah, there is signage up there, but it is faded, so we are, we are planning...
If law enforcement, if somebody goes up there, they're trespassing at those hours?
We've even taken the liberty of, on holidays, even though the sign is faded and it alludes to that, to put up a sign that says, no shooting on Thanksgiving, no, you know, range closed due to holiday.
So they'll be trespassing if...
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think what the officers are finding is that people that they encounter there just lose track of time, and I know it's an annoyance to some of the residents, and we get that, so we just kind of move people along, because there is no real enforcement mechanism for us, as Council Alesskowitz was alluding to.
Council Shade?
Through the chair to the mayor, is there a clock up there?
I don't really know.
Do we have a clock up there? Can we make sure?
We can't even get the clock here to work, so I can't imagine getting the clock on the range door.
We could provide some way to, so people knew the time, I think it could maybe help.
All right.
Worth a shot.
Council Bona?
Worth a shot is, no pun intended, but imagine putting a clock at a shooting range, what's going to happen to it? The, I think for counselors, new counselors who haven't discussed this in the past, you can, again, go to the city clerk, she can pull up old minutes, and also, actually, if you just search it, you'll find articles through iBerkshers when this has been discussed in the past. I think part of it is, while we know enforcement is the issue, I think the main argument we're getting is that there's a, again, one or two, they really just want it closed, period, you know? There is no gray, it's black and white. So they're using, again, possible lead in the water and thinking, and again, that's been tested, and they're using other things, but they want it closed. So, you know, we can enforce it, and it should be enforced, but that's really not what they want.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Motion, can we get a vote? Motion to file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion to file has been approved. Okay. Council Paper Number 12,370. Communication Number 26 from Mayor Maxi in recognition of Women's History Month and to announce the 2024 award recipient. Going to file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak to us, please?
Yes, I would love to. So usually each year, I, we would take nominations for this award. This year, I thought it was fitting just to have one recipient, so bear with me. As you know, March is Women's History Month. In 2022, as the first female mayor for the City of North Adams, I created a Women's History Hall of Fame. For this honor, we recognize women who've had a major impact on the community, been a mentor and role model to others. We also look for women who've showed strength, wisdom, and courage. These women have paved the way for a better tomorrow for all of us. This year, I'm pleased to induct Mrs. Justina Carlson, who in my mind was the queen of history of the City of North Adams. Mrs. Carlson left us on March 7th, 2023, after a courageous battle with cancer. She graduated from Jury High School in 1962, then she received a bachelor's degree in Spanish from Georgian Court University in 1966, and then obtained a master's of art in teaching from UMass, and received a second master's degree in Spanish from Middlebury College. Justina was known as a devoted Catholic lecturer, Eucharistic minister, and had spent 65 years at Saint Francis Church as the organist. She was a member of the Catholic Daughters of America, and she served on several boards in the City of North Adams, specifically remembered on the Historical Society, and also how she shared the love for North Adams with visitors to the tourist information booth. She was a member and a chairperson of the Historic Commission, an usher for the Mass Moka Museum, and an organizer for the jury band and chorus alumni events. Justina took pride in serving her community, her civic faith in academic communities as well, and she was recognized for this achievement. She was a lifelong member of Kappa Gamma Pi, a National Catholic College Graduate Honor Society, serving as the national president from '97 to 2001. In 2017, she received the Woman of Achievement Award from the North Berkshire Business and Professional Women's Club, and also was honored with her husband Gene, who is with us tonight, as the 2019 North Berkshire Heroes in the North Berkshire Community Coalition. Justina was a friend to all of us, she was a pillar in our community, and I'd like to recognize her this year as the recipient of the Mayor Maxi Women's History Month. Mr. Carlson and Marissa? There you go, my friend. You're too tall, I need to grow. And Marissa was a former student of mine when I taught roller skating. Thank you so much. Marissa, and your little friend? Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Kimmy's here, you gotta stand back up so she can put it in the paper.
Just perfect timing, Tam. I should have worn my coat tonight. Thank you.
I should have, I should have left my elevated socks at home.
Any discussion from the council? Okay, thank you. All right, licenses, no taxi licenses. Next up, open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance, and please remain within the two minutes. Would anybody like to come up and speak tonight? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Either of them.
Either one, yeah, that one's fine.
And just FYI, the microphones are for those at home, they don't really amplify for the room.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Council Blackmer, appreciate that.
Hi, everyone, I am Meg Labby. I actually am an Adams resident, but I lived in North Adams for 25 years. I'm here with other colleagues from the Mass Moka Union, and we just came, I just wanted to come and talk a little bit about, really quickly, about the strike you guys are all seeing down on Marshall Street. I just wanted to let you know that we are 125 in our unit, there's 200 staff members over at Mass Moka. We just finished day seven on our strike, and we are on, we negotiated for about five months on our wage reopener, on our year-two contract, so we've been negotiating since October now, and we went out just on strike on March 6th, so we just wanted to come and see if there are any questions or anything, and make ourselves available, so you would know the faces that are on Marshall Street right now on strike. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can't ask.
Yeah, there's no back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, just so you knew their faces.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name an address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Lillian Savatsky, 441 East Main Street, North Adams, Mass. So I'm here today to talk about the housing crisis in North Adams. We all know the problems, our housing is... Uh, we all know the problems, our housing is aging, there's limited number of houses that have been built in the past several decades, rents are quickly climbing. So this is a quality of life issue, but it's also an issue for businesses that are trying to attract and keep employees. So I've been sitting around my kitchen table with a group of other people, some of whom are here, and we've been talking about these problems and we've come up with some questions and also recommendation. So first of all, the questions, in twenty twenty, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission created a North Adams Housing Needs Assessment. And at the end of the report, there's a series of recommendations for North Adams, they're mainly focused on zoning as well as access to state funding. And so we wanted an update from the city in terms of progress that has been made in terms of those recommendations. And tonight, after this meeting, we'll be sending the questions to you guys via email and I also have hard copies here. Um, and so we believe that, uh, changing zoning and making sure that we have access to the needed funding is a great place to start. But beyond those, there are models for permanently affordable housing like community land trusts, limited equity co-ops, non-market housing, and we can learn from the successes of those models in other communities. So these are some of the ideas that we can bring to North Adams if we're organized, if we're educated and if we're educated on these topics. But these ideas require extended discussion and ideas are only as strong as the ability to implement them and as, uh, as well as the community that supports them. Uh, so we're asking the city to create an affordable housing trust, like we have in other communities in Massachusetts, to allow the community to talk about ideas like this and engage the wider public on the future of housing in North Adams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I pass this along? Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, Counselor Fitch can pass those out and then I'll ask the mayor to step up for mayor's updates.
Um, seeing we had some extra time tonight, I won't keep you here long, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to provide you an update on some projects. Um, I'm sorry, I can't see with or without my glasses, I'm truly old now. Um, so at the last council meeting, um, I believe Mr. De Sadey was here to talk about some of the concerns on Walnut Street. Um, we did have our meeting last night with the neighborhood. Um, we had a great meeting, twenty-seven people. We talked about where we were in the engineering process, where we were in the grant process, and I think they're armed with enough information, um, to kind of call their curiosity at this moment. They did make some excellent suggestions about increased signage, um, and those are things that we will work on over the next week or so. Um, but we had a great turnout and it was, uh, some great dialogue. Um, along those lines, also, I just want to report that the YMCA roof project is moving along very well. Um, we are still aiming for an end of the month, um, completion. That is all dependent of the weather, not only snow, but high winds. We spoke a couple of months ago about a grant that we received, um, to assess the Mount Williams Reservoir as well as the Knott Reservoir. Um, we have submitted a grant as a result of that engineering study for the hazardous mitigation program for the construction part of some repairs. So we hope to hear about that very soon. Um, most of you are aware that we did receive, um, one point two million and change from the state for our July tenth storm damage. Um, I believe I previously reported that that money is going to be focused on the engineering and fixing of the Fuller, Bryant, Brooklyn, Frederick and Houghton area. That was a high impact area that we had. The HRR study continues to move along with the Army Corps of Engineers. We are working with the federal delegation to get our seven hundred thousand dollars, um, released. Um, we are also underway with tying bond for a lead-in pipe inventory, um, which then will lead to a construction project down the road. Um, we are looking at our information system, um, KVS is really outdated and we are looking to upgrade that system. So very soon I may be coming to the city council for some support with that, more details to follow. The RFP for Sullivan School is out on the street. Um, we have some very interested parties in the building. Um, I will be having a neighborhood meeting down the road, um, once we start flushing out what those proposals are. The Mohawk Theater is soon to be let, we're aiming for first Friday in April. We still have nine bulbs that are out, so we are addressing that. Um, our Chapter Nine Road project is out to bid, that will cover Eagle Street, Houghton, Owens North and Brooklyn. Um, we are also out to bid for the Brown Street Bridge for a temporary, um, fix, which in my lifetime is not temporary. Um, we are currently applying for our next round of CBDG funding for roads. Um, engineering is completed for Hall, Grove, Laurel, Orchard, Prospect and Chase. Um, we are working with tourists on the Blackings Street parking lot development, which we received a grant for, um, earlier in the year, that is under design with Waterfield Design Group. We are working with the BIPC for, um, some funding for Heritage Park and exploring some great opportunities. I got a long list, I'm almost done. Um, we are in the process, as the YMCA is moving out of that building, to evaluate the building and determine what we are going to do with it. Um, we are also exploring, um, the possibility of a new elevator here in City Hall. Um, we are in the process, poor Stacy, she's been pretty busy. Um, we are looking at the parking system that we have and exploring parking kiosses, kiosks, um, so we can get rid of all of our old, um, meters, that is going to be a little bit longer process. We certainly haven't forgotten the public safety complex and the needs that are there. Um, we are doing some engineering work on our Public Services Roof as well as the City Hall Roof. Um, the City Hall Roof will be out to bid probably by the end of next week. Um, we are assessing all of our playground equipment, evaluating the Christopher Columbus Bridge and the Sons of Itley property. The Veterans Memorial Bridge is being engineered by Mass Dot. Um, a recommendation will be coming from them hopefully soon. We are in need of a new transportation scale, so we are pricing that out as we speak. Um, we are completing, we're very busy here, even though people don't think we are. Um, we are completing a Brownsfield inventory of all city-owned property and other, um, sites that may be considered Brownsfield within the city of North Adams. This is going to help us prepare for our next round of EPA funds. Um, the city of North Adams Police Department has just been funded through the Strong Communities Grant for a system called Lexipol. This will help us get all of our policies and procedures and some tracking in line that will put us in line to become a certified police department. That's one of the goals that, um, I've charged the department leadership team with. As you know, we recently moved our nine-one-one dispatch center over to what we call HQ on Holden Street. We just applied for a grant for phase two of that project, which will include, uh, mobile portable radios and bases, um, for our other infrastructure for, um, nine-one-one. Kathy Ead is leading a charge on a mass, a mass broadband grant called Digital Equity. She's also working on some green community initiatives. Stacy and Kathy, um, and, uh, Counselor Breen, um, are pushing for a mass preservation projects grant that's due on Friday. Um, we're hoping to get funding, um, to repair the, um, much-needed Belvedere at the public library. And there's probably ten, thirty other projects that we're working on, but those are the questions that I get from people, what's going on with this, what's going on with that? So I thought while we had some time tonight, I would, um, provide you all with an update. Um, as always, I look forward to any questions or thoughts that you have throughout the process. If you want to shoot me an email or maybe in our, our monthly quarterly meetings, we can talk more. Um, but I just thought that you all should know on the multiple stages of things that we're working. So we have a lot that are in process, we have a lot that we need to research, we have some that are out to bid, we have some that are grant pending. Um, but my whiteboard is, um, clean right now, um, because April first is the start of a new quarter for us and we will update all of our projects again.
Okay, thank you, mayor, that's quite a comprehensive, uh, list of items, thank you. All right, we, um, sorry, committee reports in minutes. Hearing none, liaison updates. You sure? Okay. All right, counselor concerns, Counselor Blackmore.
I would like to acknowledge and thank the city clerk and her office for running the election last week. I know there was a lot of, um, early balloting. It was somewhat overwhelming from what I heard. So it was nice to have, have the, the team up for the presidential primary and then we'll have the state primary and then we'll have the federal election, so. It's, it bodes, it bodes well for the rest of the year, as long as the staff all stays. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Bonner.
Uh, yeah, through the chair to the mayor, um, as you were going down your list, you missed, uh, a very current one and that is the demolition on Eagle Street.
I'm still not acknowledging that, Counselor Bonner.
I know, but it was, um, so, um, I believe, my understanding is that the city is taking the cost on that initially?
Initially, yes. We are still, we are still trying to work with the owner, unfortunately, it is a, um, safety issue. Um, and we had to step in. Um, our timeline basically had run out for that property. Um, I don't know what night it was, they all run together lately, um, but there was a significant failure of the structure, um, and we gave him an, we've been giving him an opportunity and we gave him an opportunity that morning to get his own team in. Um, no one was on site, so we had to employ our own contractor. Um, our biggest concern on that site is, um, protecting the old Desperados Building. And, um, we're, they're basically taking it down piece by piece. Um, it's not the type of structure, because of the proximity to the building next door, that you can just put the wrecking ball in and it'll fall in. Um, so it is very time consuming, we had a little bit of the delay in the start because we were told that some environmental testing was done on it and, um, we had to complete one more step, um, which worked to our favor because it doesn't contain asbestos, believe it or not. Um, so watermen, um, construction or excavating, whatever they're called today, um, are really doing a great job at taking it down for the safety of the building next door. Um, so I don't have that on my working list because that's a project we inherited, not something that we're working. Um, but we're hoping by the end of the week that we've had significant process, uh, progress there, so at least, um, uh, Ms. Moore can occupy her building again.
So my, my, my next question would be, um, obviously when we hear how you're describing how it needs to be taken down, to me it sounds like it's a costly one.
It is.
And how, um, where does this come out of the budget, how's it paid for?
Yeah, so, right now I do have some money that I've earmarked through, unfortunately, ARPA, um, for another project that we're going to have to put on hold. Um, our hope is that we can come to a, an understanding with the owner for the work that is done to date. Um, but time will tell. Um, we've been waiting for engineers from his side to come, um, and I'm hoping by Thursday when Mr. Moranti returns that we can at least get it to a safe place so he can take over the project.
Is there an estimate?
Um, so we, initially, when we were declaring the whole site asbestos, um, we had started this process about thirty days ago. Um, it was anywhere between a hundred and ninety thousand to two hundred and ten thousand. We also had problems that a lot of contractors who came to look at it for us did not want to touch it because of the proximity, um, to the next building. Um, unfortunately, time ran out on that property and we did have the roof fail, or the, the building failure. Um, and it's an unfortunate situation, I think most of us who've lived here our whole lives got our high school pictures taken there and remember being in the window. Um, so, you know, we were really hoping the building could be saved, but it, it can't.
So the two-ten could be low?
The two-ten, I think, though, even the one-ninety, I think is high.
Okay.
Because it's not a hazardous site anymore.
Okay.
So we don't have to do the special removal like we did for Houghton Street and the Prospect Street demos. Um, we were able to get Gem Environmental up on the roof to do the final testing and all the testing came back negative, so that worked in our favor. Um, I know that night when we spoke to Tammy, we were pretty pushing to get it down quickly, but we had to hit pause because I wanted to, if it wasn't hazardous, I didn't want to have to declare it hazardous. Um, so we, we contained the area. Um, Monday, we lost a whole day on Monday with, um, work there because of the high winds. We certainly couldn't put the crane up with the high winds. Um, we were very nervous about the structure, um, but we're, they're chipping away at it. Um, but it's, it's just sad, it's a piece of our history.
Counselor Blackmore.
Question, follow-up question to that, the work that's being done by watermen under the guise of the city is subject to prevailing wage, correct?
It is, and it's also going to be part of a lien if we can't come to an agreement.
Right, but if he comes to an agreement and then has the work done himself, he'll save a ton of money because he won't have to pay prevailing wages, the federal, which includes, it all includes in retirement and health insurance and all of these.
Other benefits.
Things, plus a salary set by Boston rates. It's not that we're not paying our people well, it's just, it's an issue.
Yeah, it's, it's just a sad issue and, you know, in, in his defense, you know, he bought the building in November, but it was already in deplorable sight. He was taking some kind of action, but time ran, ran out on the stability of the building. We're just very fortunate, we haven't had any heavy snow.
It's still.
Counselor Wilkinson.
March fifteenth, it's going to snow.
This is a quick follow-up question, what happens to the little park next door?
Yep, so we'll preserve the park, we remove.
There's a big machine in there today and it didn't look like it was too preserved.
We specialize in mud. Um, so, we took the benches out of the park, um, once, you know, Biggs is gone, we'll, when the building is whatever, um, we'll fix the park back up and maybe it'll be prettier than ever.
There was a lot of work done on that park, so.
Yeah.
Loving kind.
Yeah, I mean, I held my breath during the holidays when we had the beautiful display there. Um, and, you know, even when we have coffee in the parklet, the, some of those windows, uh, last summer were making me nervous. Um, you know, we try to work with people the best we can, um, but, you know, he was under an order and, you know, I was really hoping that morning that, um, a construction company would appear and he would just do what he had to, but he was having a hard time finding people. So we found someone for him. But what the end result of that is, we're just going to continue to do what we do.
Okay, anybody else, counselor concerns, Counselor Fitch.
Yes, I wanted to bring attention to the Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study. Um, this, for those who aren't familiar, there's a rail that's being studied right now from Boston North Station directly to North Adams, with stops in places like Greenfield along the way. Um, it's a project that could be a game changer for our city, you know? There used to be a passenger rail, of course, right now it's just freight. Um, I've been to a couple of these community listening sessions that they have and they've published a new couple of them coming up soon. One is on Thursday, March twenty-first at one PM, that's a working group. And there's also a public information session, the third, I guess, from, on Thursday, March twenty-eighth, from six to seven-thirty PM. These are both virtual to my understanding and more details can be found at mass.gov forward slash northern dash tier dash passenger dash rail dash study. Or just Google it and you'll figure it out. And hope to see you there.
Yes, thank you, yeah, I too support the fact that if we can get passenger service back into the area, I think it would be a great, be, be huge, really would, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?